No, you were the one that did that, Don, not me.
All right, your camera on?
Yeah, we're good.
The purpose of the meeting to meet in the closed session was to have Daryl Hall come in under his contract that said that after 90-day review, we should be in closed session to see if there's any issues that would further need to be or further need our guidance on. Do a discussion in closed session with respect to what we want to do with the animal control officer. And Tim, if you want to make your motion, we can open it up for discussion.
I would move that we eliminate the animal control position that we've been currently using for several years. And because Rick Otino is in that position, we'd end that at this time and...
The compliance?
The compliance officer. And we would pay him through the remainder of the year. And we would hire Daryl to continue to do all of the dog barking complaints. The only other thing he'll need to do is do the camera inspections and the chicken groups. And then Chris will do all the phone calling for unlicensed dogs at the beginning of the year. We'll have the treasurer do that. And I'd also like to eliminate all violations. All that does is upset our residents.
But you're second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hall, we ask in closed session, have you had a chance to discuss any of this or have any appreciation for what we're asking of you today?
I would be more than glad to take the responsibility...
He's already done it with several minutes of last month's report. It was parking dog complaints in there. That's what made me look at it and decide that that's a good idea.
And we know that the... Did you say the clerk or the treasurer will be making the...
The treasurer will do it.
And you've talked to the treasurer about that?
From your side. And if she needs assistance to that, I can want her assistance also.
And when it comes time for enforcement, if people are not licensing their dogs or...
They were discussing in closed session that we're not going to enforce it.
No.
That's their problem.
And we've got tons of people in this municipality that don't license their dogs, including me, a town chair that did for a lot of years, didn't license this one dog.
It just causes people to get angry.
Yeah. And it doesn't matter what municipality you want to don, it's the same thing. They don't do that. We've done more in this municipality to license dogs than anybody around us has. And I think all it does is upset them, and it doesn't really benefit us at all. That's why I propose it.
All right. My question is the one that I would ask on behalf of the town. We have a contract in place with the existing animal compliance officer through December 2020, I believe.
Right. Oh, and that's perfect. We just paid you as long as you did.
Until the end of the year?
No.
We will pay the remainder of his salary for this year. In the sporting world, they call it buying a lot.
It's a win for Rick. He gets paid to not do anything.
Any other discussion? I do think, I do think we should have the attorney tell us that, that that's a win for Rick. And with respect to...
We're going to give it an hour again here.
We already told him he doesn't have to make phone calls at the last meeting, and he came up to me and thanked me for doing that.
Yes, he did.
So I think what else is a lot for him to do that we already have going on?
My only question has to do with stopping a contract the way we're doing it today.
I think the only, when it comes to contracts, if I'm out, in my world at least, like Tim's saying, I would agree with you if we were eliminating his pay, but we're paying him out. So he's gonna, I don't know if he's gonna fight to say, well, I still want to actually work for that pay. That would be pretty interesting. And with coronavirus right now, he shouldn't be out anyways. He shouldn't be put in that risk. So...
All right. I want to say the precedence of what we're doing here. If we do it with the animal control officer, theoretically, we could do it with the treasurer, and we could do it with the clerk. And other than me finding out about it in closed session today, I have no knowledge of this. I don't think Mr. Hall had any knowledge of this, and I'm sure the animal control ordinance has no knowledge of this. I just ask that from a legal perspective, that we make sure that we know that this is something that we can do, where we spend all that time in closed session, employee meetings with the animal control ordinance person, that we just suddenly say, contract's done, we're redoing it, or we're paying you out.
I wouldn't agree with everything you said, except for just to get a hold of the attorney, find out if he's got any issues, and if not, if he does, then you bring it back, the license is not due.
So is that, do you want to make that part of your motion?
No, I'll make it as part of the discussion that you're allowed to call in and verify that it's not a violation.
Okay. And if it is?
Then we'll need to bring it back.
Seems like we've done this before, Tim, but I'm not...
I don't think it's going to be an issue, Don. That's why I'm not worried about it.
All right.
If you want to do that, go ahead. If you're buying a lot, you're fulfilling the contract.
All those, if any, further discussion? All those in favor of Tim's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion's carried. Thank you, Daryl.
No problem.
It's normally not this contentious, but it's all kinds of things going on, through your stations and...
Water, it's the worst of the catches.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No money out.
Next is discussion on stormwater permits agreed with Harvest Time Church. Mary, you asked to put that up?
Yeah, I think we need to look at the situation with the flooding. I think we got lucky this spring because we didn't have a lot of snow, so I think we're going to be lucky. I think we need to look at that situation because all those yards back there flood, and it's kind of a, it's kind of an all-encompassing situation. So that needs to be discussed and considered.
Well, and you're specifically discussing the Harvest Time Church?
Yeah.
In those neighborhood, those people that flood?
Because, because they're, because they're already constructing, that's why I run it up.
Okay. Because, I'm trying to see the last sentence again, because they're already what?
Constructing, like making, like, do we work at that there? Adding subject, adding stuff?
Okay. But they're, but they're adding that up on top of the hill.
I know.
They're not adding it downward floods.
I understand that.
Okay. I put it on the agenda, and I met with Tim on this, you know, last year when we were doing this. I spent many, many hours on this. I'd be glad to go through this, to understand what the issues are with this. We have met with the Harvest Time stamp, we've met with the neighbors, we've met with the contractors, the county highway department, Tammy Traxler, and we did all the research on the original plats. And the contractors came in and cleaned it out last November.
What's it designed for?
Pardon me?
What's it designed for?
Yeah, what do you mean it's designed, what is designed for?
We need to dug it up.
It's designed for what you and/or the people 30-some years ago approved.
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
And whoever approved it 30...
Is that a 25-year storm?
Whoever approved it 30-some years ago, Tammy looked at all those, all those plats, which was no small task, as to what was approved.
My guess is 25.
I'm just going to finish, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm just going to finish my sentences here. We're going to have plenty of time to talk. Tammy looked at all of those plats that were approved. There was even discussion with the highway department whether or not the culvert could be lowered on Jacob's Lane. The original pitch of that retention pond that goes from Jacob's Landing south was never designed to be the proper pitch to get through the culverts and get out underneath The agreements that were in place were to open up that channel, get all the wooded vegetation out of there, and dig out the original detention pond that was approved of the original plat. And I, and I considered a public-private partnership in that multiple meetings with the church and the residents, that the contractors came up with a plan, you guys were copying on the approval from Tammy Traxler, I brought a copy of that along. I'm talking about the lots. The work was done, I think it was approximately $2,000. It was split between both neighbors. So I'm asking why it's on here today, and that the request at our last meeting was for adding bathrooms to a building up on top of the hill out of a building that they bought. And we can't condition that request for adding bathrooms onto this drainage area.
Correct.
And I have met with the county on all of this, and if the board members have a plan that we can bring forward, I'm more than happy to listen to it. But just like we can't go back on 60 cul-de-sacs and say we're going to add gang mailboxes to it without their permission, we didn't have the permission to go back in here and do this work. Those are not, those plats were approved without the stormwater overlay agreements that we have today. So that's, that's the harvest time issue.
Okay. Can I speak now?
Yes.
You're done? Okay. All I'm asking is for a maintenance agreement. We're not asking to do anything. A maintenance agreement, by definition, just means if we need to do some maintenance, they're in agreement that we can do it. That's the definition of a maintenance agreement.
You know that? But our maintenance agreement is a little different. Our maintenance agreement says word agreement that we can do it, and they agree to it, and they pay for it.
Well, that can be a discussion, I don't care if we talk about if they pay for it or not, but we still need some sort of, we can make a maintenance agreement and say because they're a church, we're not going to have them pay for it if we want. They'll pay tax dividends.
And my, my point to this whole discussion is that, is that this was a symptomatic, this was a symptom of a problem this area wide. The drainage basin to that doesn't start and stop at Jacob's Landing. The drainage basin to this starts and stops all the way up above. And if we're going to be looking at storm management water agreements so we can go in and do it, this isn't the only area that needs to be attended to.
Yeah, then we should look at other areas too, but at the meantime, this one's the one on the agenda, but I agree with you. If there's other issues, we absolutely should look at more storm maintenance agreements.
Well, then, then why don't you bring forward a plan for us that we can look at?
It's because you don't let me do anything.
That's not true.
Yeah, it is.
It's not true.
Every time I want to discuss something, you say, oh, I'm not ready for that, we're not discussing it this time.
Well, it's simply not true. I put, we discussed it at the last meeting when Harvest Time was here.
Yeah, and you told me that you needed to wait.
No, it's on the agenda today.
Yeah, I asked for it to be on the agenda.
And it's on the agenda.
Correct, and I'm asking that we do a stormwater maintenance agreement. I'm not cheating what I'm asking for.
Well, I, okay, I, there's many things that I would request too. I'm trying to broaden our discussion, as we did with the upgrading our ordinance.
Yeah.
Then if we're going to go and look at potentially piecemealing, all right, why, why would we look at a stormwater management agreement only on Harvest Time Church, knowing that we have flooding issues on other issues throughout the town, based on plats that were approved without stormwater management agreements? How, how would you handle that?
I feel like you think I'm picking on you or something. I'm not. That's just a situation that we were looking at what was going on, because work was being done on it. And in my opinion, since stuff's already being looked at for that plat, we should add that while we can. And we can look at other areas. I'm not saying go to other areas, we might need to have them in 10 areas. I don't know. I designed a town.
I didn't either.
I know you didn't.
I didn't either.
I'm saying that we, we have a lot, can I finish my statement? We have a lot to look at, for sure. But right now, we're currently looking at this one section, it's nothing to do with the church. I don't care if there's a church there, it's about the situation down there. It's about the backyards of all those homes being flooded.
Can I say something?
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure the supervisor, Yaku, is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, I feel like I'm repeating myself, so no.
Supervisor Thill?
I'm with her in that regard, especially with, there's more stormwater issues around this town than just that area, what you're saying. And I know a lot of people have a lot of spring runoff issues where, I mean, I've seen electrical boxes underwater all over the place, which is really dangerous. And I, I think a lot of it is due to a lot of storm retention, storm not being maintained, trees growing in them, stuff being brushed out, kids riding four-wheelers in them. I mean, I think, I think we need to change the way we, we react to stormwater. I think we need to be a little more proactive with it. That's just my opinion. I, I'm, this particular thing, I know it's been ongoing, but I know we have more issues around the city. There's some down by me. I mean, I've had people call me and say, geez, what's with all this water running in my yard? It's like, hey, sorry, the next culvert's not draining. You know? But I think, I think, I think the maintenance of our retention areas are, is lacking and should be dealt with. It's a little late going back, but I think moving forward, we need to start coming up with some different solutions or policies.
Any other comments?
No.
Supervisor Foster?
My gut feel and my memory is that's designed for a 25-year storm. I don't believe yet, when that development got approved, that we, we were starting to mend 100-year storm designs before the county even demanded it. But I don't think that one was, which means, I believe that the design is for a 25-year storm, and we've known from this point recently, we've had multiple 100-year storms in like three, four years, which means maybe that's something as Supervisor Thill said, and Yaku, once we hire an engineering firm, we ought to do a stormwater runoff plan for the entire town, and then go back and address issues wherever they are, and try to correct that problem.
You know, but, but budget the money to do that, Don. You know what I mean? Make a plan. All right. Supervisor Thill, as you end up with the, I don't want to keep going around wrong.
I was just going to say, I was going to add that, and I was going to double back, but I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
As far as a new engineer.
Is there any other discussion on this? Because I want to say two things. I don't disagree with that, but I just, what I disagree with is that we worked on this continuously all of last year. I kept the board informed of this, I met with Supervisor Foster. The time for us to talk about this, in my opinion, is to broaden this, as we did with roads, and updating our ordinances, and potentially looking at, who knows what's going to happen with our RFP for engineering. I'm simply saying having it on the agenda today is, I do not see the linkage between Harvest Time coming in, adding bathrooms to a building on top of the hill, and that's the ideal time for us to enter into a stormwater agreement with them. I, I think it has to be broadened, so that we, that we look at the whole town, not just some other case, and say, oh, gosh, there's, there's Harvest Time, let's get a stormwater management agreement with them and condition that based on their bathrooms. All right, is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing. I wasn't conditioning on it based on their bathrooms. Their bathrooms are approved. On the condition on it based on their bathrooms, I would have done that back then. It's, not saying it's not, it wasn't an afterthought, but you know, sometimes we don't think of everything right away, and I like Tim's idea to do it all at once with an actual engineer. We already know the problem spots that we can point out, but please don't insinuate that I'm, that I'm picking on Harvest Time, or that I'm trying to put it on the, on, as a, as a necessity for the bathroom.
Okay. I, I, we're going to stop discussion on this. I wasn't even referring to you. I was referring to Tim. Tim, at the last meeting, when we came up, Tim would ask about putting the stormwater agreement on, which I remember in my mind. So is there any motions going to be made on this?
Can I make one more, Ron?
It's really brief, because I said before, we're not going to be here all day.
I think this, I mean, I know this is something that just kind of came up, but I think there's no better time than the present to set precedent and start doing what she's proposing.
Great.
I mean, yeah, we could have talked about it last summer, but I, you should propose it now, and I think it's a good time to set some precedents and start, start moving forward and put some...
Well, I think Supervisor Foster had the best, best approach. Let's see what happens with our engineering approach. I, I still believe this should be done...
I agree.
...across the town, not on a case-by-case basis.
I agree with that.
Okay. Can I make another comment?
Well, really, it's on that, it's on that issue. It was several years back, the University of Wisconsin River Falls came and proposed that they would hire, they would, we would, the town was going to hire college kids that were in the geography department to do a stormwater runoff plan for the entire town for $12,000, and Jeff didn't want to spend it. So I would like us to approach the University of River Falls and see if they might have some college students that would work on that during the summer.
Do you want to do that informally?
I can.
Okay. Because we're going to, we're going to be looking at an RFP here in a few minutes. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, we're going to move on to the next one, which is discussion on the 2019 financial statement.
You didn't shut the door, did you?
I won't shut the door. Oh, I stopped the front door. No, I haven't. Okay.
I didn't put it on here. Ricky, did you have something you wanted to share with us?
No, I took off what you wanted off, so now you can just sign off on it.
Oh, okay. So that's, that's the one that Chris sent us? You got your ass to tell it through a packet?
At the last meeting, it said we had to remove that line out of there, so it's removed.
All right, you need a motion for that? Is there a motion to approve this?
Huh?
Do we just need to...
You don't even have to approve it, but I just wanted to have a time to talk about it, because at the last meeting you wanted...
Okay, this is, this is a special meeting, and so we're moving through these without a lot of motions.
So if you want a motion to approve it, fine, if not...
Well, do you have a motion to approve this? We may as well.
Move we approve it with those lines exchanged.
Second, what changes are on here? Second, any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion's carried. Discussion and action on dog licensing. Do we want to discuss that any further?
Yeah, I don't know if we take, often we take full action on it, or, I mean, is it, I don't know, do we panel out with another motion?
Kind of. The only thing I want to make clear though is that we'll still contact everybody at the beginning of the year with the postcards, we'll still contact them if they were on the license last year, with the treasurer making phone calls, and if Daryl wants to, he can call, help her call. And then whoever doesn't license, their dog doesn't license, we wouldn't, we wouldn't send out citations. We'll trace him for the money for what...
So I just have a real simple question on that. And I understand, I understand the all side of this discussion that we're having. It's my understanding, one of the reasons we license dogs is because of the state law that says they have to have a rabies certificate. And I understand that from having a farm background, that you should have a rabies certificate, which is one of the reasons we go through this. If, if we're setting up a new process now that says, you license your dog, but if you don't license your dog, you don't have a late fee...
Now, you can, you can charge a late fee, you're not going to send them a $75 violation.
So what is, what is the late fee?
Five bucks. So it's what it's always been.
And if they don't comply, then what, then what are we going to do?
Just force having them notice, make them phone calls. You don't, you don't badger them, you just keep asking them to please find the time to come in and pay them.
Well, these are unnecessary questions. I'm, I'm asking that so we know.
No, no, and I'm taking...
Which is what I believe, because I think we're laid out, if I read the note earlier, I think we only have two outstanding late fees now. So in terms of badgering, I'm, I'm trying to understand...
And what you're, what you're saying now, and now you got me confused.
I think it's pretty simple. You send out the, the postcards, like we always do, like the city does, like Village does, like everybody else. These people are adults. They either come in and license their dog, or they don't. They get their rabies vaccine, obviously, at the vet, right? And they get a license for that too. So are we going to control who goes to the vet if who doesn't? No. So the thing is, is, the thing is, is we're spending unnecessary time on, on this because we can't force anyone to do anything. There's probably 100, 100-plus people easily, in fact, I know there is, that don't even tell anyone that they have a dog and don't come in. I mean, you can't, you can't decide for them whether they're, we, we have it, it's state mandated, correct? So we have it, we send the postcards out, but we can't drag them in here. So they either follow the law, or if their dog gets caught, it's going to go to the pound, and that's their consequence. And they're going to require them the license and pick them up. Like, I don't know why we're making consequences. They either license them, or they choose to break the law and they don't.
And that's what all other municipalities do. So I'm, I'm just asking, we don't need to spend another 80, $800, $880 a month for something that we don't need to do.
I'm just asking this now so we understand what, what we're doing.
I do.
I didn't set up the original process, and I didn't set up the original contracts. I have a right to ask what we're going to do if we're modifying it.
And I told you.
Well, what you just said, well, maybe it's like five bucks.
No, no, I didn't say like five bucks. That is it, Don.
Five bucks?
I don't like if it's five bucks. When I say it's $5, what it's always been, that's what I meant.
And if there's a dog at large?
And the pound picks them up.
The pound picks them up.
We have, we have...
They pay the pound fee.
Daryl.
And they got to get their license. If they got a license, he'll get it back to them, and there's no charge for that.
All right.
That's what we have there.
Those are my points. Any other discussion on dog licensing?
We need to make a motion to...
No. I don't think so.
So how, how do we enact it then, without a motion? It's just, just going to just stop doing it, or if we just don't ask?
We didn't have it the other, well, we're...
We didn't have...
Okay, yeah, why don't you make a motion, it's what we're going to do with the dog licensing.
Okay, I move that we continue to send out postcards to alert people of dog licenses, but we won't follow up...
We'll follow up with one phone call.
With one phone call, we can follow up with one phone call.
Is that not something that we want to put in the new contract that we have with Daryl Hall?
No.
Well, because Chris will be the phone calls.
Chris is going to make the phone call.
We'll follow up with one phone call with our, with our county treasurer, with our county treasurer making the one phone call.
How?
Sorry, town treasurer making the one phone call.
Okay, why don't you state your motion one more time?
That's a lot of effort. Okay, so we're going to, I make a motion that we will send out one postcard per household regarding licensing their dogs, or dog, and also follow up with one phone call from the town treasurer. And we will not continue after that to...
Pursue.
Pursue licensing for that year, until the next year.
Second, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I oppose. All right, discussion on a one-acre lot in the, in the town. Let me just go back through the virus thing, while we can't come up any closer to six feet. If you could talk really loud, you could probably just talk to us from there.
Last night, we were here at the planning commission, and they...
Okay, talk, you got to talk louder for me, I'm an old guy.
So last night, we were here at the planning commission meeting, and...
Can you name your name? Sorry.
O'Neil, sorry. And...
Would you spell your last name for us?
N-I-C-H-O-L-L-S.
Can I? Your first name?
A-N-I.
Okay.
So last night, we came to the planning commissioners' meeting, and we discussed, you know, having one acre lots on the east side of O'Neill, because we are currently, our address is on O'Neill. All lots to the west are one acre, all lots to the east are minimum two acres to split. After discussing with them, they all agreed to, um, move forward with, I guess, recommending, uh, the rest of the town of Hudson, that that's up to the city, to allow for one acre lots splits.
And did they have the maps on it, did they discuss with you the, um, how this came about?
Yes, yep. Well, they said that it came about from Windsor Heights, when they did their development, because that development is still part of the town of Hudson, and they put that line there for Windsor Heights.
So they just discussed with you, making all those lots go down, allowing all those lots to go down to one acre, not mean, not all town lots that are up at the city, just that specific road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I helped that. The motion was to move the lot, to move the line from O'Neill south of the interstate to the city property. All that land that's in the town that's to the east. So, they didn't discuss anything further in the town. If we're gonna do this, we're gonna have to revise the comp plan, and we should look at the rest of the town and see if there's any other areas that we would also wanna consider going to one acre before we change the comp plan at that time.
Well, the only reason, the only reason Windsor Heights went to one acre was to keep them from annexing to the city. Because they were gonna annex into the city, and so then they came up with this idea that if they drew the line, you know? So they saved all the, because there would've been a lot more houses there, it would've gone to the city, so they were trying to keep it in the town.
The Glen was the same thing.
Glen was the same thing.
But there's, there's some open land yet, and maybe we should consider that, if there's other open lands, are we willing to consider? That's some, the town board and the planning commission should discuss when they can, revise the comp plan and then move forward.
It's not, it's not small.
No, it's not a small deal.
Just so you know, today, just because the planning commission said, oh, that looks like that might be a good deal, this is no small issue.
Why, really?
And there's a lot of people that are going to say, no, that's, that's, we've relied on this now for many years, this is where the lines are. So, I, I, I guess we're back to the same discussion here. Is this something the town board wants to even consider, to go back and start looking at revising our subdivision standards? And if we do that, we should be looking at, we can't be looking at just one lot on O'Neill Road. We can't. We have, we have to be looking at comprehensive, what are we doing for the entire town?
There's a thousand dollar fee to amend the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I...
It's not, it's gonna cost way more than that on this, just because it's... But, and you have to redo the comp plan before you can do it as well.
I, I think, I mean, I'll go first on this one then. I believe, I believe, you have every right to come in and petition your government, and you have every right to come in and ask. I think that we have these comprehensive plans and subdivision ordinances in place for a lot of reasons that we all can rely on them in the future. To me, this looks an awful lot like a spot zoning, where we're gonna go in and say, oh, this looks like something we could carve out, because someone else has done it elsewhere. And my biggest concern on this, if we start down that road, we, we know we had Windsor Heights, and we know we had the stuff up here along Norwood, where the, the city was coming in. But if, if we start looking at this, other than your request, I don't see a big demand for us today to start looking at reducing the size of our lots down to one acre. And, and if you have a chance, or you read through ninety point six of our subdivision standards in our ordinance, you can see how it's basically a but four ordinance, but for these areas. We want this to be two and a half acre average lots, for well and septic and, and protection of everything that we've talked about.
But it is not. There are three lots south of me, there are acre and a half and less. And the houses are built after, I built mine, except for a quarter mile.
Well, but that, how long has that house been there?
My house?
No, the, how, the house south of you?
One's been mid, mid, oh, mid-eighties. Or one before that, one next to the, that is about the same time.
On one and a half acre lots?
Yeah, they're not performing lots.
Yeah, I, the neighborhood next to me has a one point two acre lot. There were, there were several lot performing lots in the town.
But I think you're saying the same thing. Just because there's some non-conforming lots, doesn't mean that you, you could come in and start doing your one acre lots, or I could do my one acre lots.
But see, I, I was, forty years ago, I was looking into this, you know, and I was told absolutely not, because it was extra territorial zone. Then the Mr. Heights came, and I was at the meetings, you know, when Dick Reck was, uh, petitioning to split the, split the land, you know, from Mr. Heights. And they said, you know, as far as I know, it's two and a half acres minimum. And Rita Hall said, no, it was the one acre. Maybe because it suited her, because she had a little chunk of land there too, to develop next to it.
So you said four and a half years ago, I mean...
Forty years ago.
Forty years ago, thank you, thank you. I believe that forty years ago, I mean, I, I think these are all circular discussions we're having. Forty, forty years ago, we did have stormwater management easements across these lots. You heard that whole discussion we had now.
And, and the thing is, you know, I'm not going to put the development, it's only for one house, that's all.
Well, those are my feelings on it.
That's zoning, sorry. But what he's requesting is spot zoning. So if we're gonna do it, we've gotta go through the comprehensive plan and look at do that.
And I would not support that, I, I, I don't think, with all the stuff we have going on in the town, that, that we, we don't even need to list, which are multitudes. I don't know why we would go back and start redoing our comprehensive plans, looking at areas where we could do one acre lots, so that we avoided spot zoning on this request today. That's how I look at this.
So, let me, let me put it this way, city has a moratorium right now.
Yes, it did, yes.
But if they changed it, I have four hundred feet that's along the city line, do I go ahead and, oh, and put, you know, three homes like this guy did this along the stage line?
Right? I mean, you, you're asking me to answer a question for the city, they have a moratorium out today. The city could come in and annex a whole lot of stuff from us as a town. But that's the same issue that we're having. I, I, I don't think that is an argument why we would do spot zoning today on this, so that they didn't come in and annex it later on.
And you also used the word, you know, carve out the land, there is a, there is a lot that's...
Can you speak up, sir, I just can't hear you, you have got fire.
Carving, you know, a piece of land, you know? There was, there is a lot, right behind me, it's, the entry is from the stage line, and there's carved out one acre of land, you know, and that was done, I think, less than ten years ago.
I can't, I can't, I want the other board members to, to jump in, I can't speak for you, that happened in the past forty years ago, or ten years.
No, 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 this was done less than ten years ago.
On the west, east, east of your lot?
East of my lot, the, the entry is on the stage line.
In the city?
Which, which address is that, do you know?
Yeah, give me right now. It's, uh, four, four sixty-nine. And I wouldn't know that if I didn't speak to the neighbor about it. They used to, the house used to be a group home, I mean, yeah.
Oh, you brought that up last night, Brian said that that was, the land wasn't carved out. They just received permission as a group home. Ten years, that, no, that's what Brian said last night. That's what Brian said.
Tom, he told me he paid extra for that acre of land.
I'm just going, I'm just going by what's on our master map here. And four sixty-nine includes that.
So Tom, what did he do with it? He added on?
He, he, no, he bought, he bought a house, you know, which used to be the group home. And he said he bought the extra chunk of land, you know, extra acre. And I had no idea that, until he brought it up. And if you go on Google Map, we'll show it, it's all his things.
Oh, and he combined it? He can, yeah, you can do that. He didn't make another acre lot, he combined a historical one acre non-conforming lot to a, it looks like about a two and a half acre lot, Sam.
No.
That's what it looks like.
The map, the original map shows that, that, that line is almost, it was almost five acres, it's four point nine something, and, uh...
Well, if that's done, it didn't get approved.
It was four, four point nine.
If it happened, Sam, it didn't get approved.
Yeah, 'cause there's, on our master maps, there's no access point to that lot.
Or somebody, gun somebody.
Other, other than through four sixty-nine.
So the only information you have is chatting with your neighbor. You don't have any documents from the courthouse that it's registered or anything, you know? I, I, that isn't part of the discussion, I don't think.
How many acres is your lot?
Three, three point four three.
I mean, e- even on this, even on this map, it looks like it's been combined through four sixty-nine. Well, I don't know what the other board members think, but I just appreciate you coming in, but I just think, with everything we have going on, I, I don't know what the nexus is, or what the argument is, why we would start doing a complete relook at our...
This was brought up at the very beginning a year ago, more than a year ago now, when we started the subdivision ordinance, and we worked on the subdivision ordinance for a whole year.
Exactly.
And it never got past the few discussions on, because this was brought up if we wanted to change that. And it never got through there, and a year's worth of work, and there was many meetings.
Sure don't want to just connect with like a...
I just think it's crazy that we're on the same row. The people that have an even address can do this, but the people that have non- addresses cannot.
It is what it is, sorry. Don, Don's right, the rest of the board wants to consider if we can, and it would be a huge undertaking to do. And we wanna take the time to do that.
You mean change the comprehensive plan?
No, we can't change, and you could, not only just change your comprehensive plan, you gotta go look at all the land that's to the north of the interstate and say, what is still north and east, and you might as well consider doing one acre parcels.
We're not just there, you gotta go on North Hudson and look at all the stuff up there, and you gotta look at all the...
All, all of this.
The entire town you have to look at.
And, and, and that's why I'm saying with, with, I know from your perspective, it appears that we're just across the street.
It is, ten feet, twenty feet, I mean, it's just...
You're fact, you're factually correct, but, but if you could ima- have an imaginary zoning overlay on top of it, that, that's what we have to look at as a town board.
I understand, I just, I do and I don't.
Okay, well, I, I made my feelings clear. I just wanna keep, we've got a lot of other arguments on here.
Didn't look like the, the planning commission wanted to talk about the landlord. All they wanna do is recommend that we do it, just in that little section.
Yeah, which is spot zoning.
We can't spot zone them, I agree with that. We don't spot zone them.
Well, you have to do the whole comp plan to, they didn't think about that.
Well, because Jeff never wanted to.
Well, no, but the planning commission apparently didn't think about it last night either, because...
We don't like saying no, I personally don't like saying no.
So is this for good?
But on this one, I mean...
Is this, this, this for good?
Pardon me?
Your no is stamped for good, you know, so there is no, there's not...
Can't you come back and bother you? Because, I mean...
Are you gonna make a motion to deny, is what they wanna know?
Oh, I don't know, we're still discussing it.
Well, that's...
That's what he's asking. He said, no, no, no.
Me? I, this, what is it?
That's what he's asking. I'm willing to look at it.
When do we, when is it, that we, we have to look at the comprehensive plan soon, correct? When does that start?
A year ago?
I know, but when's it due?
Twenty twenty-six, isn't it?
You gotta do it over ten years, right?
Right.
Two thousand sixteen.
So twenty twenty-six?
Should've been done, no, it's already passed ten years.
Right, as I said, twenty sixteen.
And I brought it up in twenty sixteen, and Jeff didn't want to do it.
So we have to look at it, we need to start looking at the comprehensive plan. So either way, we're gonna have to look at this and register it with the state. So we can, in my opinion, no, it's not final. We can, because if we're gonna have to look at the comprehensive plan, we can look at all that at that time. That's what we're supposed to do, we're supposed to thoroughly look at it, and see, you know, and then, that's, that's the time to change any... I wouldn't say mistakes, but as the environment changes, you know? We can't predict what's gonna happen when we first do the comprehensive plan.
Well, right, because Red Cedar Canyon didn't exist when we did the...
Right.
Plan, the comprehensive.
I don't disagree with any of the discussions, other than it's not due for another six years.
No, it was supposed to be done in twenty sixteen. Supposed to be done every ten years, it was done in two thousand and six, last.
Well, if we leave this as informational today, and we don't make a motion to deny it, whatever hearing from the boards, when you come back in and look...
Well, you're gonna have to take action on it, though, some way, shape, or form, so you probably wanna deny it today, and then come back after we look at the comp plan, and then see, I mean, you can keep this in the back of your head for when you start working on the comp plan, that this is obviously one of our issues, is that we need to look at all the lots, now with all the annexation and all that.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that unfortunately, we have to deny it today. However, I wanna leave it open for during the comp, when we start looking at the comprehensive plan, that we look at all of the lots in the town of Hudson, and correct what we feel, or change what we feel needs to be changed. Include specifically, make sure we look at the O'Neill Road in its entirety.
Do I hear a second today? Okay, and I, my only question is, do we wanna make that specific to the applicant, because our, our agenda says just discussion on one acre lots?
Well, it's... I think you wanna deny all one acre lots right now. To one lot acre lotter in the town of Hudson.
Deny any additional one acre lots.
To deny any additional one acre lots.
Okay, comfortable with that?
Yep.
All right, there's a motion being, there's been a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion's carried.
There's still a chance. We just have to do it during the comprehensive plan.
Okay, but what is that, what, what happened?
Good question.
Six years?
No, six years, or four years overdue.
It could be a year or two, easily.
It took, it takes the city, when I was in the city and we did a comprehensive plan, it literally, literally took us a year to just get the comprehensive plan ready to submit to the state. And that was with a lot of meetings, so... That's the only timeframe I have knowledge of to give you.
Ours took two years, I think.
Yeah, I think both of the other two took two years, the one in eighty-eight, and one in two thousand and six, took two years.
So...
Can I, can I get backstory, why are we so behind on that?
Jeff Johnson didn't want, didn't think we should follow the comp plan.
For the state mandate, why?
You don't get penalized for not updating it.
They commanded that you do it, they didn't penalize you for not doing it, that's what the problem was.
Because of the amount of money it was gonna cost, he didn't wanna spend the money.
Okay, the motion made, but voted on, three other discussions I need to move along. Thank you so much for coming in. Stay in touch with us, come to the planning meeting.
Just so you know, we need to move along because, move along because the governor put that...
Yeah, I understand.
That's right.
I don't want to think we're rushing you.
Nope.
All right, set, set a date for informational meeting on becoming a second amendment sanctuary town.
What's set a date?
You know, I...
June?
Seriously? I'd, I'd like to discuss this before we set a date.
But it's an informational meeting, so it is important.
Okay, let me, let me just, let me just back up for a second. This, this request has been made for us to come and have, first it was made that we come and become a sanctuary town. And I did not put that on the agenda. Now it's, it's a second amendment informational meeting. I just wanna broaden this discussion real quickly, because I've had it before. These sanctuary motions, and I'll put the disclaimer in there, I don't, there's no stronger second amendment person than I am. But I firmly believe that these should be done at the county level, not the town. And I shared briefly, there's seventy-two counties, and there's twelve hundred and sixty towns in the state. And if we start having an informational meeting on one town, very similar to this, with what we have going on, and now guess what, the informational meeting came out and said, we all feel that we wanna become a sanctuary town, and we want it on the next agenda. I don't think that has been thought through, and I don't think the, the place for that on a statewide basis is at the town... I don't think that has been thought through, and I don't think the, the place for that on a statewide basis is at the town level. I think it's at the county level. And from looking at this, if you look at Monroe County, and all these other counties that are looking at these, and several of those looked at it and did not pass them. I just think we'd be better off, we contract through sanctuary county for our police, everyone else, nine, nine-one-one and everything else. I just don't think it's well thought out to come back and say, all right, let's, let's be a sanctuary town. Now, those are my feelings.
Well, this is a second amendment sanctuary town, which is different than a sanctuary town, which is what Roy Schober, actually Roy Schober wanted us to be, a sanctuary county. Just...
But I'm saying the exact same thing, no, it's residents versus guns.
Right.
No, I'm saying with respect to becoming a sanctuary county, county versus a town. All, this whole movement is being promulgated at the county level, not the town level. And there's very few city levels that are being approached, other than we have one citizen that said, hey, this is great, let's, let's start this at the town, so we can, we can be a beacon to the rest of the area. And I'm just not sure how that's going to work. I've, I've said I think it's more symbolic than anything else, and we have no police force. So now we're gonna contract with the county and say, hey, if something, they're gonna go, well, you're a sanctuary town.
Right.
I, I view this as the same thing, but we don't have the staff, or the time, or anything else to start going to these meetings and listening to this, and defending this, as to what, why, why are we a sanctuary second amendment town? And how is that going to be implemented?
Wasn't, can I say, wasn't the request by, by the constituent, wasn't the request more, was it to be more symbolic? And make more of a resolution to kind of nudge the sheriff and nudge the county? I don't know if it was specific to us becoming a sanctuary where, where we expect police not to come knocking on our doors.
No.
I think it was more symbolic aim, wasn't it?
No, when I was approached by it, it was, it was, let's get this on the agenda.
I took it as being more symbolic, if I go back, I mean...
I'm just filling you in on how this all started, it was, it was not symbolic. I, I used the phrase symbolic, I believe it's gonna end up being symbolic. It was, let's get, let's get the town of Hudson on record and become a sanctuary town.
Yeah, I don't think it was, he was meaning as symbolic.
It was not symbolic.
I'd be shocked if he meant it as symbolic, he needs to sit for it.
And yeah.
Well, I apologize.
I was here, but I, but I think it was more less pressing that we're trying to nudge the sheriff in to become a...
Yeah, you were, you were here, you were here at the end of multiple meetings that you were not here, which I'm trying to share with the rest of the board, which is why he wanted to be on the agenda. So it moved from, I want to be on the agenda because I want to have this, I want a sanctuary town. And I asked the question, if we're, we're not set up for that, we don't have a police force.
No, I agree with that.
Okay.
But was there more, was there more conversation after that town board meeting?
No, no.
The one at the last town board meeting.
The last town, the last town board meeting, I don't think you were at the last town board meeting.
No.
No, we were trying to fill, fill in what he had. Then it became, if it's not going on the agenda, then let's have an informational meeting. So now, now that's what the request is here, and I'm just saying to the board, you know, there's, there's only a couple of meetings that I know of, and those are mainly homeowners associations that come and use the town law. And we've, we have a policy in place that the supervisor, what a supervisor has to volunteer to come and open the door, let them in, make sure nothing's destroyed, let them out.
I think he wants it to be held...
By the board.
By the board.
Yes.
Right. He wants an informational meeting.
Not the general public.
He needs to be in charge of it, he needs to be in charge of it, he wants an informational meeting, which is the only reason why I'm okay with setting a date, because if he wants an informational meeting, fine, give us information.
Well, I'm not, because there's a ten-person rule now in states.
Oh, yeah, we can't do, we can't do anything until that's done.
Well, and you need to remember, we don't have a single ordinance with guns in the town of Hudson, we follow state law, so I don't know why we would go... Again, I mean, we follow state law, so why, I mean, whenever anybody calls... Um, yeah, I had somebody call yesterday, it's like, no, you need, well, I need the regulations, you need to get them from the D N R. I, we don't have the regulations.
I agree with everything she said, I agree, points out or point down, and that's... Jackie Smith used to complain to me, their treasurer, that we have an ordinance that says you cannot leave your garbage can out over twenty-four hours. And I said, I'm sorry, Jackie, we do not have any garbage can cops. So we need to be careful when they're creating ordinances, that you have some way of enforcing it, and I agree, this one doesn't make any sense.
I don't think, well, and, and there's no sense for us to set an informational meeting with the town board if, if, if it's not on the agenda to come and talk to the town board, so I... I, I don't, I say don't do it on both fronts.
I think that's what he meant, he meant this would be a public hearing.
Yeah.
To have an informational meeting, to make an ordinance, I think that's what he meant, huh? But I, I agree with you, I don't think it's a good idea.
I don't think it's a good idea.
I don't want him to actually make ordinance, I was just saying that's what he wants.
It's a public hearing.
So I don't want a public hearing either, that's totally different.
And I think if we did, it would, it would be symbolic anyway, so it would really be moot point and a waste of everybody's time.
They agree, they agree.
So is there a motion to deny setting this up? Because we might, we might as well say no, we're not gonna do it. I, I see, I'm not gonna try not to repeat myself. If, if the applicant, if the person wants to come and have an informational meeting here, like you would at the Rotary Club or something, that's a different, that's a different issue, can you do it with coronavirus deal? If you're asking us to pull out, pull this out now as a town board and say, we're gonna have a separate informational meeting, strictly a sanctuary second amendment for the town of Hudson, I, I'd say no.
Yeah, it's done to have anyway at this time, like you're saying, but even if we would, would set it, I wouldn't want to set it till after we knew this whole mess is over.
I think you'd want to talk to the sheriff and see if the sheriff is in favor, or before we start doing it, since he's our police.
Yeah.
I think he probably...
Well, I, correct, I think you think we're kind of foolish.
It's symbolic, and it's a waste of your time.
So we have three, three other items on the agenda, do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to deny setting a date for the informational meeting on becoming a second amendment sanctuary town.
I'll second that.
Okay, and the reason for that is that, that we have a county sheriff, we need to know what he thinks, this comes through at the county level, and we're not gonna start doing it at the town level. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion's carried. Okay, discussion and action on the R F P for engineering.
So the attorney just wants us to send out the short one, and send it to the list that he gave me, so can I do that?
Yes, everyone got, got to see Paul's note?
Alright, so I just need a motion to send it out as further attorney.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, the motion's carried.
Can I ask something else?
Yeah, I got, I got three other items. Was it with respect to the R F P?
No, no, nevermind.
Okay.
Well...
Okay, I...
I don't know what else you got, or anything else on that.
I, I have, I have two things I want to make, we need to talk to the board about this. We need to discuss a little bit what's happening with the coronavirus and what's happening as we speak, with going from fifty, fifty more, fifty people in a room to ten people in a room to, do we even have a meeting? I'd like to talk about that. And then I'd also like to just ask the board, I saw the note here on our payroll quicken books. It looks like that's something we need to do immediately.
That's what I agree, that's what I want to bring up.
So go ahead and just do it.
Yes, yeah, but I don't think we need a motion for that.
No, because it's part of the thing, but I just wanted you guys to know.
Okay, then, then let me cross off the payroll quicken books, so we can get out of here reasonably time. So the, the meeting limitation, real quickly, for the people in the audience, this is the stuff that's coming out to us. This came through the towns association. It's at effective twelve oh one on Tuesday, March seventeenth, which is today. All private and public mass gatherings are prohibited in the state of Wisconsin. Mass gathering is any planned or spontaneous public or private event, or convenient or bringing together, likely to bring together fifty or more people in a single room. There's exemptions to that, the exemptions are, number seventeen, I believe applies to us, office spaces and government service centers, and number twenty-two is an exemption, it says, facilities operated by the Wisconsin Legislature, Wisconsin court system.
Wait, where was that?
No, that's not ours.
Where was that, where did you pull that one from?
This came from the towns association, it's in your mailbox?
No, I'm looking at it, but I don't see the seventeen, number seventeen.
You have to go to the link. And I'm just saying, here you go.
I don't care, I'm a voter.
Well, it doesn't matter, the governor just put it into effect at five P M. tonight, ten or more people were...
Yeah.
Right, I understand that, I just, the one I'm opening, it only counts so many, I don't have that.
You can keep that, you can keep that.
Do we have to do anything more to say, we will cease all meetings and elections?
No, you can't cease election, it's a federal, it's a federal election, you have no say over it, and so I have to sit here with all the people.
And the elections are going through.
It's going through no matter what.
Yeah.
Speaking of R nineteen mess.
Well, we got a, we got an email from them too at four oh six, did you see that?
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
But I, I'm saying this is being updated as we, as we speak, the ball of America was closing through the end of the...
Trust me, I'll be deep in the throats of my own.
Yeah, we're not exempt, we're, that's not our exemption, city hall is closed at downtown, I mean...
So what, so, so let's, let's talk, ask each other, what's the one that just came in at four oh six today?
Ten people.
Ten people?
Now there's another one at twelve seventeen.
This one says on March seventeenth, the governor issued an order banning all public and private gatherings of ten people or more. State and local government facilities are exempted. Canceling the meeting is discretionary, is a discretionary decision on the part of the board, but if there is nothing mission critical, canceling an upcoming, upcoming meeting should certainly be considered. Given the open meetings law, it is impossible to know how many people might show up to a meeting, which may make it difficult to comply with the governor's March sixteenth order.
Correct.
Right. And do we know how long that goes?
Not yet.
No, it won't.
It's indefinite.
I don't have the answer, this is, this is a dialogue. I'm simply saying, our, our next meeting is two weeks from today.
It says all unit meetings?
You're gonna have to cancel it.
It says all unit meetings, just, just to give you a date type thing, it says all unit meetings will be canceled until June first.
Right.
And do we consider this a unit meeting?
I should.
No, they're the same, that's what this, that's what they did, it cancels every, because there's...
That's a town, that's a town...
Right, but they're saying, it's because of the whole eight week issue and, because it's...
Okay, wait. The, the towns association, that, those are the ones we meet quarterly on.
No, I know, but I'm trying to explain to you that nobody, like, they're not...
Nobody knows when.
Right, so they're even talking about canceling the rest of the school year, so...
I, I, okay, I, I understand that.
I don't know if I want to come meet two weeks from now and...
No, I, I don't either, but I think we should talk about it today, what we're going to do in two weeks.
Until we hear...
Well, we don't know when we're gonna have that, just...
At this point, we cancel all further town board and planning commission meetings until such time as we hear differently above groups of...
All committee meetings.
All...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Because you can't have E M S, you can't have fire, you can't have...
No, you can have fire, no, we don't have to have people there.
They're open to the public though, so as soon as ten people show up, then you have to cancel the meeting, and you can't kick them out.
Never have more.
Well, Rich O'Connor canceled them all, they're not having any.
Yeah, it doesn't matter anyways, they already canceled it.
They canceled all, or all's told.
But you could have a...
Everything's a hearing.
A what?
A barium hearing, because there's never anybody there, almost, less than two.
Well, then they can clean them, again, that's the whole thing, I need to keep everything, because I have elections, so if I'm having any extra meetings in here, I'm required, I had to sit through training yesterday for the COVID nineteen, and what I'm required, and I don't even have the cleaning supplies to do it.
Hey.
Well, I got a whole bunch now, but they're not gonna last me that long, believe me.
Well, I bribed them to let me have two more pounds of bleach, I said it's for the election, and they said, okay. So I had to fool.
Yeah, be careful what you mix them too, because we had an incident that our city, again, we almost poisoned a cleaner, a contractor here. Our library staff started cleaning the library with bleach and water.
Too many bleach.
And the cleaning company was using a peroxide-based cleaner, and he got poisoned.
Well, since it says Vicky has a cleaning company and everything else, he's getting dragged.
P S A, be careful what you mix them.
So, I didn't mean to, I didn't...
No, that's okay.
I, I want to wrap this up, and I'm asking the clerk, and I'm asking this, because I have not read these snippets. I only came prepared to talk about what the towns association was saying as of yesterday, applied to today. Now we're from fifty down to ten. What do we need to do, based upon a formal request, what do we need to do to cancel this meeting?
I just have to put it on the website that it's canceled.
You tell us, I tried to, and you wouldn't let me.
I don't think we should have any meetings until after the election.
I agree, I agree with that, simply because the next meeting is like four days before the election, you should have completed everything.
No.
No.
Okay, seven days before the election, excuse me.
But I'm even wondering whether you should do your main meeting.
I'm thinking no either, but we'll have to wait and see what they say.
So my, that's why my recommendation is no further meetings, and tell me here that the coronavirus is under control and we can have...
Well, until they lift the ban.
Larger groups of people meeting, will that happen, so we can...
Right, when the governor lifts the ban, we can have meetings.
Right, that's what I...
But for today, it was just monitored, right? I mean, you're not putting that in the form of a vote, are you?
Well, yeah, you should.
Well, neither was, yeah.
What if, what if we provide a Zoom alternative, we've got video, it seems like that, you know, we could, we could limit, you know, we should check into it.
You can't limit.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about limit the actual physical presence.
You can't though, it's open meetings.
I don't, I don't. The question, have we got an attorney's opinion on that, that says that we can't do Zoom?
You can't, that's what it says in the...
Says within the, it's not up to extent though.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, um, suspend all meetings of any kind for any town business until the governor lifts the ban.
Second.
I think we have a responsibility to our citizens to be safe.
And by, by any town business, you said, any public town?
Committees, all committees, commissions, everything.
I can still come out and sign checks.
But so that's, we're gonna talk about that in a second, so Don, just, we're not, the only extra stuff we're gonna buy now is gonna be cleaning supplies, if we can find them. Um, we shouldn't have any other, obviously the QuickBooks bill will come in, but he can just sign off on all the bills, everything else that's gonna be paid in the next couple of months is actually already in the budget or whatever, and so...
If Joe Murtha was supposed to contact me this week to get me a price on having Badger sign and replace half of our signs this year and half next year, I was hoping to have that at the main meeting.
Well, if you get it, just give it to me and I'll get it out to everybody, so they can start looking at it.
Okay.
And that way, and we can get it on the next meeting.
Okay, whatever that is, okay, I'm okay with that.
So, and then Don can sign all the bills and sign the checks, correct?
Yes.
I mean, this isn't the most ideal situation, it's kind of unprecedented.
I'm assuming you're gonna have like hand sanitizer, it's a serious question, but the election, do you have like hand sanitizer?
No, I don't have it, I haven't been able to get it, well, we tried to order it, so hopefully it's coming.
I had a twelve month order, but Amazon stopped shipping now too, so hopefully...
That's not true.
But that's what, we got a thing, yes.
That's, it was read, misread, it was read wrong.
Okay, perfect, so I have twelve month order, bigger ones, like eight or ten thousand ones for the election.
Yeah, that Amazon thing was like a misstatement.
Perfect.
Well, we've been looking for three weeks to try and get hand sanitizer, and...
If I find anyone who'll go shopping, I'll keep, I'll keep bringing it in.
Get them, anybody that sees it, get it and bring it in, but just keep the receipt.
That one, we'll keep bringing in more.
No, that's not hand sanitizer though.
I just have a question for the board, given the motion you've got on the floor here with canceling meetings, would, does that mean my meeting for board of adjustment Thursday night is done?
Correct.
It should be, yes.
Uh, will you be sending a note out?
I'll send it out tomorrow, we just, I was gonna leave yours on until I just got the email, literally when I was walking in here to the meeting.
I thought we could have done that, but the motion is to eliminate them all.
Yep, that's what I heard, so I want to make sure.
It gets cleaner that way.
Yep.
I just got a question, is there any way that we can reach out, like say your... I just got a question, is there any way we could reach out, like, to say your thoughts on it, as a friendly gesture?
Well, we reached out to the county health department, they...
I know, like, say your fault, we have a pretty decent supply of it. I'm sure the city of Hudson has a pretty decent supply of it, I mean, I'd hate to have an election and not have...
Well, we'll get some.
We have, we have... I'm not even kidding, I have been at the stores over and over and over and over.
But we're three weeks away from the election.
Okay, well...
We have 12 bottles.
Every time I tie a order...
Everybody keep their...
Anything we can do in Fort Worth to find it? Whether it's public, private, or whatever, please find it and get supplies.
I mean, I have been on silly websites trying to order it and at stores in multiple towns. We're not the only one, at our meeting yesterday, none of us have it. That's why we had, and the state told us we had to go through our county health department, and our county health department said no, that they don't have it for us, so...
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to be a good steward in time, it's approaching 5 o'clock. Anything is a board, we're all together. We talked about QuickBooks, we talked about Perel, we talked about canceling meetings, anything else?
Just that we need to vote on the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. You get the motion, Vicky?
Yeah.
Who seconded it?
Tim.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion's carried.
And depending on what happens tomorrow, the office might be closed.
Right.
Because I can't keep up with whatever and try and clean and whatever, and Monday starts in-person, so I have to have everything sanitized again before, and I can, you know, everybody has to stay six feet apart. So that means I'm supposed to only have one person in this...
Do we need a hair cleaner?
What good is that going to do, I have to clean all day while I'm here anyway. I mean, I have to have it, so that's what I'm saying, everybody just stay out, because now I have to re-sanitize this whole area, and I don't want, so don't come in here. I'm going to shut the door, and no one's going to touch anything.
I'm going to come in around...
Today, we literally just got done with the FedEx guy, who said, "Oh, you have to sanitize the package because we have coronavirus confirmed cases at FedEx." So we're wiping it down, get everything sanitized, and somebody comes in and...
So, Vicky, is it a point to help us as citizens? Does these Clorox wipes do that on your FedEx package, or that has to be...
Well, that's what we use, but who knows if it really works or not, or, I mean...
Basically needs like 62% alcohol, or about 60% alcohol or bleach.
But I need Clorox wipes for my voting machines on Election Day, because I can use those on Election Day. Because you can't use stuff.
Thank you, everyone, is there anything else we should talk about?
I have a couple of questions, so is there like a strategy as far as, you know, for Election Day? Because, you know, you could, as far as like wiping off the booths or whatever?
Absentee vote, that's all I'm going to tell you, because it's not going to be sanitary in here on Election Day. You can, we only have so many supplies and so much time to get the people through, and we can't just follow everybody around and wipe off every pen every single time.
Well, you know, you could do like a Lysol spray and just wipe it off.
No, you can't do that, that's the thing, you have to, no, we had our COVID-19 training, everything has to be left wet and it has to air dry, and then you can touch it after it air dries.
And how would the absentee vote numbers been?
Well, I did 148 before I, from this morning, I got here before 8 o'clock, and before I came in, I think we were at 148 today. I was really low until now, I mean, I was kind of worried about it, but I thought I was going to run on ballots today, but the real ballots showed up today too, so now I have my whole stack of ballots, but...
So what should we be telling citizens that we run in?
Go to myvote.wi.gov, don't come in my office, don't come in here to chit chat, don't come in here to, you know...
Make you register and stuff on there too.
Tomorrow's the last day to register, after that, then it's only in-person.
So tomorrow's the last day for my vote, for registering?
For registering, but you can still request an absentee ballot till the Thursday before the election.
And walk us through that, then, so then they get the ballot?
As soon as they did send, I get an email, I print it out, yes, I mail in the ballot, they vote it, sign it, have a witness sign it and address it, put it back in the envelope, throw it back in the mailbox. Stamp's on there, it's all addressed, it's simple. Now, the less people we have here on Election Day, the better.
So what should we tell our friends and neighbors?
You can ask Tim, it's good, people are going to be complaining, and they're all going to be complaining to Tim, because he's going to be the first one they see.
And I was surprised at the last election, how many people we had here, it was amazing. Because that was just a primary to find out who goes on.
Right.
This one's going to be busy too.
Yeah.
We're going to have a lot of people here. And with our city too, the same thing, nobody's doing it, like everybody, you see it all over the place, absentee vote, absentee vote, but nobody's...
Chris and I didn't do anything else today, except wipe down some stuff and do absentee ballots, we did not touch. Well, she printed those two checks, otherwise we hadn't touched anything else. Because they have to be out in 24 hours, so they had to get done, so...
Anything else? Real quick, now we got to wrap it up.
I missed the discussion on the financial, what was the gist of it?
We'll fill you in after the meeting, should change the information...
I took the line, I really want to know, that's what you said at the last meeting.
Okay, I just want, just one other thing, because, you know, it was brought up, you know, after our discussion last time, was the 400,000 that we apparently have as an asset, which...
No, we don't. No, we do not. And that's why I had to talk to you about what you need to verify, Steve. The 400,000 is in the EMS department, has nothing to do with the city account either. EMS was separate from the city.
So you're saying that we don't have 400,000?
We do not, the city had 400,000 dollars they maintained in the St. Croix EMS account as a retainer, so they can make payroll. My question to Don was, what happened to that 400,000? Do we get a portion of that, or is the city just going to absorb it out of that St. Croix EMS account?
So you're saying that we don't have any claim on it?
I think we should, but we did, that's what Don could do, to get a letter to go out to get it, but it would have never shown up in any audit anywhere, either here or the city.
We got to go.
I know.
We did sign the letter.
We did, and the attorney did, but it's not our money.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you're second.
We have to be out here in 30 seconds, so we got to go bill so we don't break the law.
Keep it.
You can sing.
You want one of these? I got actually...
I got so much trail on the car.
Tim, I have a funny chicken story for you.
Give me a second, I'll use the...